Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mayor Lahey?
Here.
Six present.
Need a, we're on, need a motion to approve the two special meetings on March 31st, 21, 2021, and the regular scheduled meeting of minutes Lowell School Committee, April 7th, 2021, place them on file, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. That's all of them, right? Permission add to, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's only two items listed within your packet, the recommendation is approval as, as written.
Any questions on permission add to? Need, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Boyd, if you don't mind, just the second one there, could you just explain what exactly it references?
Thank you, Ms. Desmond, can you share with the committee?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd, WestEd Learning is a contractual organization that has been endorsed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we have utilized WestEd in the past, they help support teacher professional development, to support effective meetings and effective professional, PLCs is what we call them, professional learning communities, and so, as part of the Lowell High School turnaround plan, one of those elements in the plan is for teachers to be working together to plan effective lessons, and so this would be the professional developer that would help provide support for teachers to be able to do that, and it is being paid through our turnaround grant that has been awarded to us from the Department of Ed.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all right.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Clark, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Six yeas approved.
Tonight we have a memorial, like to have a moment of silence for Dr. Gertrude Bailey, retired Lincoln's, Lincoln School Principal. Thank you. Next we get into the motions, first motion tonight by Mr. Dakota, 7-1, what is the, what is the current status of Lowell High School graduation for location and dates, will J, Junior ROTC Cadets Band or Chorus be participating? Seconded by Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, I think there'll be some mention of it in the report tonight, so I can defer to get that information at that time, but I think we really, we need to have something finalized sooner rather than later, for all of those groups, if they're going to be participating, they need to start getting ready, that sort of thing, so that's my concern. I know that our Junior ROTC kids are always ready for everything, and they're just super kids, and I think if we're going to be having the band and/or chorus performing, they need to know as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Second motion tonight by Mr. Dakota, ask Superintendent to ask City Manager whether, where the Lowell High School project is in the project timeline, are we on schedule, behind schedule, or ahead of schedule? Seconded by Mr. Dillon, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's fairly self-obvious, I'm thinking with, with us not having kids in the high school, pretty much an empty building, I was thinking that we might be ahead of schedule, but I heard recently that they are on schedule as opposed to being ahead, I think they've, they've probably had a few oops moments perhaps, but I, but they, I heard that they're on time, but just something official to let everybody know where we are in that timeline, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, it's a great motion, I think we've been distracted for a while, and this is something that we should be having regular updates on, I guess maybe to add to it, how can we get regular updates, or, and who, who do they come from? Because I'd love to have regular updates on this whole process, you know, I'd love, I don't know how involved we're going to be, but I want to know what's going on, so, I don't know, I guess I'm looking for suggestion, you know, where can we get that information on a continual basis? Thanks.
Sure, if we want to add to it, we could probably ask for a quarterly update, at least it's going to be ongoing for years, so.
I, I mean, I don't need to change the motion, but, I mean, that is something we're, I'm looking for, definitely, and I'm sure everybody else is, so, thanks.
So we'll add quarterly motions, Ms. Dougherty?
I would just agree with that, that I think we have several members that are part of the school building project, the high school building project, I don't know if the Superintendent is on that group or not, but to give us quarterly updates, I think would be a really good idea, even, just a short kind of summary, so we're in the loop.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to basically say the same thing, the Superintendent, both the Superintendent and myself are on that, as well as Mr. Fiatto, and there may even be other school department staff who are on the school building committee, it hasn't had a meeting in, I'd say, a couple months at this point, but, and the school committee does have one seat on it, I'm in it right now, but would be more than happy if someone has greater interest, if, if they would like to be part of that, just let me know, we could, we could certainly make that happen, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight by Ms. Dougherty, request Superintendent provide to the committee prior to the finance subcommittee meetings, meeting on 20, 21, 22 budget, each school improvement plan and school site council representative process for review and approval as required by the law, school site council reports should include the names, roles, contact information of members, the terms of service, and meeting dates for the current school year, seconded by Mr. Dakota, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, I, I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I want to be very clear, I'm not looking for a 40-page report, or any kind of huge effort of paperwork, I believe that every school has a quality improvement plan, and they should be able to get that, like a summary that's on one or two pages at the most, and then one page that gives us a paragraph description of the representative process they went through to elect their parent members, elect their teacher members, a list of the dates, a list of the members and their contact information, their roles, you know, there are certain mandates, if you have three teachers, you're supposed to have three parents, you know, things like that, but the reason I put the, the date of the finance subcommittee is I know, I can go back to 2019, that we've been talking about school site councils, how important they are, and especially given our new, the way we're doing our budget, that we're allocating money for school-based decisions, which I'm not against that, I'm not against empowering our schools to make those decisions and our parents, but it's been my fear all along that we haven't been really up to speed on the process, and really making sure that our parents and teachers are getting the training that they need, because we are a district that didn't have school site councils at every school, so as we're facing a second year of budgets, where we're going to be allocating millions of dollars, that the schools will be making decisions on their own, I think it really, it's in our scope of what we're supposed to be doing, to review these two documents together, so that would be, as I said, a one-page paragraph, how you did your elections, when you, when you've met this year, who your members are and their roles, and then one or two pages, if you need two pages, on your quality improvement plan, so that, because those documents are what, the quality improvement plans drive the decisions about the budget, so that's my explanation.
All right, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly support Ms. Dougherty's motion, I would ask, I know we are planning to have the, the school site councils present as part of the, the quality improvement plans, so I don't know if this would, could get folded into that presentation, so that they could kind of present that information on their own, and I don't know quite where we are with that process, if we could get maybe an update on that.
Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
I just realized, I wanted to say something else, I don't expect that we're going to discuss these documents at the budget meeting on Monday, I just gave that as a date because I want to have time to look at them before we schedule, and I was really thinking, maybe we want to have a subcommittee or something, and, but if you want to do it when we have the school site council present, I, but I wasn't expecting it, I know we've got a lot on the agenda for Monday night's meeting anyway, I just want to have it in my hands by then, so that we have plenty of time to review it, I mean, we've got, what, 28 schools, right? So that's a lot of improvement plans, and school site council representative process, and all that, that we have to go through, so I, I wasn't expecting to discuss it Monday night, I just want to have it next week, so that we can start looking at them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
Certainly, this is right within the scope of, of the committee's work, I would kindly ask Ms. Dougherty, if you're amenable to an adjustment on the due date, I only have two workdays, and as you can see before you, this is the spring vacation week, we're extremely short-staffed across central office, and our school-based staff is not in this week, Monday is the finance subcommittee, so we're just not staffed to be able to respond to this in 48 hours, unfortunately, if you're open to Ms. Martin's friendly amendment, that would at least give us some time to be staffed, in terms of the turnaround time, Monday is, with Monday being the subcommittee, to get this to you by Friday, I just don't believe to be feasible, unfortunately.
Can I respond, Mayor?
Sure.
I, I'm okay with doing, putting it off later in week, the week, if you're going to be preparing for Monday night, and you want to get it to us by Friday, but I don't, because we're going to be full into the budget process, I, I think this information is important for us to have, so if that's more acceptable to you, I mean, it is information, like I said, every school should have their improvement plans, they should know who their school site councils are, and, you know, it's a paragraph, how they got their, you know, what the representative process was and all that, so would that give you enough time to give you another week? I mean, today's Wednesday, so we're talking about a week from this Friday, after the finance subcommittee Monday night.
Thank you, Dr. Gillery, does that provide you a reasonable timeframe? All right, thank you, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and while it was brought up, I just want to mention again, you know, the idea that maybe we change our meeting dates when they fall on school vacations, I brought it up last year, and I tried to bring it up at a Zoom meeting when things weren't working out well on Zoom, and, you know, so I, I do want to discuss it, it, I mean, for instance, you know, I mean, we're short-staffed, and also, just, you know, people aren't around, and when we're talking about important stuff, I mean, I know people thought we were trying to pull a wool over their eyes and get something done during vacation at one point, and it's just not a bad, it's just not a good look, I feel like, and, so I think we could, we should strongly consider those two months, February and April, where it just doesn't, doesn't necessarily make sense, and we should think about changing that schedule, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so just, sure, Ms. Martin?
Are you going to respond to that?
No, well, I just wanted to be clear, when you say one paragraph and who's on it, so, so?
One page.
Per school, so it's going to be like a 20-something page report, okay.
One page for the, what their process was, who's on the school site council, when they met, it's all in the motion, and then the improvement plan can be one or two pages. I know the high school report that we just got for tonight had their improvement plan on two pages.
Okay, just, when you said not a 40-page report, it's going to be?
Yeah, that's true, because we've got over 25 schools, right.
Two pages per, Ms. Martin?
I just wanted to ask if, if we could get an update on where we are with the, the group coming in to speak, to, to meet with the committee.
Dr. Gillery? The subcommittee meeting where the schools are going to present to the committee on their quality improvement plan, just an update?
Yes, that date, I think we set Ms. Martin as the 12th.
Thank you, all right, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion tonight by Ms. Dougherty, request Superintendent or his designated collaborate with the city's DPW, police parks departments, two, one, prior tar, prior tar, it won't roll off my tongue, prioritize, there it goes, maintenance, safety of parks near our schools, two, collaborate and prioritize getting outdoor space, place structures at the Rogers Stems Academy, Cardinal O'Connell Early Learning Center, and the Bartlett Community Partnership School, and three, work together to assess the feasibility, the availability of tents to our schools to use during the extended summer program, seconded by Mr. Dakota, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, so, there's a couple of things that I'm thinking here, and I want to start by saying, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I think that, you know, the city has been working to try to deal with this issue, but I feel like we're not succeeding at it, from what I'm hearing from parents about, you know, this, the state of our parks that are near our schools, I thought if we could try to collaborate better, and one way I was hoping to do that is, you know, have a meeting, like we did the facilities meeting recently, where we had Christine Clancy from the city, working with our team to come up with a priority list of facility maintenance improvements, so that's kind of where my mind's going with the number one, is to collaborate with these different people in the city, and to really target those parks that are in desperate need of a stronger police presence, I'm thinking of South Common, much more regular maintenance in terms of picking up things that are found in the parks, so that's where one is coming, and I think that, given the last year we've had with COVID, the social and emotional stress of our staff, our families, and our children, outside space is going to be so helpful, that they, every school, it's an issue of fairness, every school should have a place structure that kids can access, and I don't think, I, there's not one parent in the city who would not agree that that's an important goal, so that brings me to number two, you know, those are the top three schools that I thought of, you look at the STEM Academy, it's our second-largest school after the high school, right? And, and there is a playground on the other side of the fence, but they, it, they don't have access to, and it's not safe, it is not safe for the children to use that playground, and the same with the Cardinal O'Connell and the Bartlett, they don't have their own area that the children can go out and play, so the last one, we talked about this last summer, when we were looking at opening the schools with only 25%, and that's why I added the word feasibility, I'm assuming that the city of Lowell has tents, we, we've had, for how many years do we do the Summer Folk Festival, right?
Yeah.
So if there's a possibility of coordinating, we're going to have an extended summer program, and think about how that's going to be for the kids, on a hot day, they have a tent overhead, or on a rainy day, they can still be outside instead of inside the building, you know, I, I just think it's going to have a huge impact on our kids, and I want us to be working better together, and it's not, like I said, I'm not trying to point fingers, but I would like not only your support to move forward with these issues, but also to have a facility subcommittee meeting, where we get some of the stakeholders together, people who are making these decisions, talking to each other, because it's, it's beyond our purview, obviously, so that's my pitch, thank you.
Mr. Dillon, and then Mr. Dakota, we do have two speakers, so I'll let the floor go, and then we'll go to the speakers. We do have two speakers, so I'll let the floor go, and then we'll go to the speakers.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I certainly agree on the prioritizing the parks and play areas. Play and activity time are going to be hugely important for our kids moving forward. They have been forever, but especially now. And so any activity time and anything that's moving our kids towards becoming physically fit should be a priority. So I agree with the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'm not mistaken, I think the city rents the tents for the Folk Festival. So I don't believe they have, they own them, because that would take a lot of room for storage and so forth. Yeah. So, but I think they rent them. And, and that might be at a premium as well, where a lot of people are renting tents for carrying activities on. So we'd have to look into that, like, now. Thank you.
We'll check into that. We could have Mr. Underwood build something, so.
So...
Yeah, you might want to just go to the mic.
I'll talk loud.
Here you go.
So when we were doing the PPE purchases for the district, one of the things we purchased was a 16-by-10 tent for each one of it. It's not, it's not, you know, a huge tent. 16 tents are half the size of a classroom. We also brought tables for them. Yeah, I mean, we could purchase more of them, but it does, it does allow a small group of kids to go out and, you know, at least a half a classroom. And, you know, and we got tables and chairs for that, too. So there is some breakout spaces, and there is some more COVID money we're hoping that's coming down the line. We could expand those to, you know, to more than one.
Sure, Mr. Dillon? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I guess I was just wondering, are we having summer school programs at every school? Is there any way we can consolidate those tents and make them useful?
We are, we're currently recommending that we expand summer school programming across the district, and we're planning, planning for such. Unless, unless there's guidance from the committee, otherwise summer programming at every school in the district this year.
Okay, great.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also think that we should look into getting several tents for those schools that don't have a playground, that just don't have any place for those kids to play. There's some concrete and hot top maybe, but that's about it. And I think if we could get some other tents, I don't know where they would go, but that would probably be another issue as well. But we should look into that. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we go to the speakers, then? You going to do that, Ms. Desmond? Who's doing the speakers? Okay, so Monica Lundberg, you're first. Okay, you're all set, Monica. If you want to speak, you have five minutes, and just state your name for the record and, and your address.
Yep, I know the drill. My name is Monica Lundberg. I live at 12 Alyssa Drive in Lowell. I am a parent of a second grader at the Rogers STEM Academy. And I just wanted to...
Just one minute, Monica. Sorry to bother you. We can't hear out here.
Um, can you hear me now?
LTC, but we can't hear you in the chambers.
Okay. I mean, I've got my volume as high as it goes. Can you hear me now?
No, sorry, just one minute. We're having technical problems here.
Okay, let me know when it's ready.
Sure. They should all be on the monitor, though, Robin? Oh, it does? And then it goes to the desks. Uh, we might.
Any luck yet?
We just need two more minutes, Monica.
And for what it's worth, the audio wasn't coming through on LTC. Just the two of you know, I have no idea when the sound is going to kick in on this and start working. So, but I am live broadcast to Lowell right now. I can see that you're... Oh, my. So I don't know if you can hear me, but I can no longer hear you. I wonder if I'll be on TV. What? Oh, right in the... Stop talking, because I don't know when the sound is going to start working again. There's a delay on the time. So what shows up there is like a couple minutes behind on here. Whatever you're doing on camera now will be on the TV for anyone in Lowell to see in a couple minutes. And keep telling us that show. It's going to save way to see. What shows up there is like a couple minutes behind on here. If you're doing on camera, it'll be on the TV. Was that terrible sound? The sound worked again? I can hear you again. The question is, can you hear us? Here. Oh, wow.
All right. Why don't we just, we'll just have to move on. So... It's going on TV, though, right?
It is on TV.
Okay, so we'll just...
You can hear it here.
Okay. We'll have her speak, and it'll go to the viewing audience, but we won't be able to hear it. Or we'd rather... Probably just have her say her speak, speech. It's on record and, okay.
Okay. My name is Monica Lundberg. I live at 12 Alyssa Drive.
Okay.
Should I go now?
I, so I can't see you, Monica? Now I can. All right. So we can't really hear in the chambers, but why don't you say what you have to say. Viewers at home can hear it, and it'll be on the record. So why don't you start over and just state your name, your name and address for the record, and then you can speak on the motion. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Monica Lundberg. I live at 12 Alyssa Drive, and I am the parent of a second grader at the Rogers STEM. And I am calling about the motion about the playgrounds, which I'm so excited to see on here. It has always really bothered me that my daughter's school doesn't have a playground. Before, we lived in our, our current place, we lived right around the corner from the Pine. And when she was a toddler, we used to go walk over by Shed Park, and we would see the kids playing on the gorgeous playgrounds that the Pine has. And I was really disappointed to find out that not all the schools in Lowell have that. There's such a wide range in what our kids have available to play on. And play is so important for development, for health, and it's also an issue of emotional regulation. Many children who are on the spectrum or have ADHD are sensory seekers. Their bodies need more sensory input. And they need kinds of input that you can't always get when all you have to play on is a blacktop. They need to be able to climb. They need to be able to spin. They need to be able to swing. And moving their body in those ways helps them regulate their emotions. So having a playground can also be a tool in the toolbox for helping our kids who are struggling with behavior in the classroom. And it's such a key thing, you know, I've, I've seen it myself. There's a huge difference. Yes, she knows. She's a sensory seeker. And, and she knows, we all know, that the times of the year when she can go to a playground and play, she has a much easier time with everything else in her life than she does in the middle of winter when she's stuck inside.
Yeah, I hate winter.
So I really just encourage you to support this motion and get good, quality play spaces for all of our kids in Lowell so that we have equitable access to that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Monica. All right. So we're going to go to the second speaker and the same thing? Okay. So Nicole Burner, if you're out there, just state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes. It's difficult for us to hear, but at least you'll be on record. And if you'd like to speak, it'll go through LTC. We can see you, so you're all set.
Very good. Hi, my name is Nicole Burnier. I live at 60 Hawthorne Street in Lowell. And I'm writing, or I wrote a letter and sent it to all of you as well in support of tonight's school committee motion 7.4 by Jackie Doherty. Thank you, Mrs. Doherty, for putting this motion forward and addressing the need for the city and the school district to collaborate and prioritize the safety and maintenance of the playgrounds and parks located at the school and/or are adjacent to the schools in our city. I believe that we all agree that children learn not only in the classroom, but they are also learned skills on the playground.
Hi, my name is Nicole Burnier. I live at 60 Hawthorne Street in Lowell. And I'm writing, or I...
Are you doing that?
I wrote a letter and sent it to all of you as well.
Children of all ages need to play, and they need to be able to do so in a safe and engaging environment where they can develop and experience the social, emotional, and health benefits of playing outdoors. Many studies highlight the importance of physical activity and play in the development of children and how physical activity is a factor tied to academic achievement. I also believe that the parents and guardians across the district recognize the importance of the cleanliness and maintenance of the public outdoor spaces for the children. This includes updating, improving, or adding designated outdoor play areas and structures at our schools and parks. The last year has been a challenge because of COVID, because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And as the schools across the district prepare for summer programming and having classrooms and activities outdoors, having safe and engaging outdoor spaces for children to learn, play, and reconnect in is going to be, will be incredibly important. As a parent with two young children in the Lowell Public Schools who have attended different schools in the district, I can tell you firsthand that there are equities between the playgrounds, structures, and outdoor spaces. Additionally, we are a young family that spends a lot of time at the different parks, playgrounds, and outdoor spaces across the city. And the cleanliness, upkeep, and landscaping varies greatly from park to park, playground to playground, and month to month. Over the last few years, I have followed motions and requests for reports from the school committee members as well as councils on the Lowell City Council with regard to outdoor play spaces for children. There are several reports that can be referenced with details, including which schools have playgrounds, which schools access the parks close to their buildings, which ones don't, and why they don't, as well as the condition of the structures and equipment. Surprisingly, there are still several schools in our district that do not have any type of designated play structures or engaging play spaces. Schools like the STEM Academy, the Cardinal O'Connor, the Laura Lee. There are also schools that cannot access adjacent parks due to safety concerns and/or the distance. As a resident and parent, I'm asking the Lowell School Committee, the Lowell City Council, the police, Parks Department, and the DPW to prioritize a collaborative effort regarding the maintenance of the playgrounds and parks near our public schools. And with summer approaching quickly, this coordinated effort needs to be put into focus. Lowell's youngest citizens are counting on you so they can access clean, safe, and engaging outdoor spaces designated for them to play and enjoy in. They also need this space, these spaces to learn and grow. Thank you very much for your service. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you Nicole. Appreciate it. Okay. So we couldn't really hear that, but we will re-listen to the meeting and listen to the comments. Any other comments on this motion? All set, Ms. Darney? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Thank you. Reports to the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two reports this evening. The first is the request from the committee from the prior meeting on the update on in-person learning. At the end of the slide deck, you'll see a screen grab with the link to the COVID dashboard. We've had now for the past six months or so, an active Lowell Public School-specific COVID dashboard that provides all of the updates that the committee typically receives. We're going to be moving in that direction. You can access it. The community can access it real time. So here, you'll notice that there's not a COVID update that's available on the dashboard, but the in-person learning update was requested by the committee. Ms. Desmond, if you could. As the slide decks get uploaded, the community is aware, at least families and parents are aware. And for the remainder of the community, April 26th is the return of the remainder of our students who chose to return to in-person learning. Mr. Fiatto is also here. He'll provide a secondary school reform update for the committee, but you'll see a specific update for Lowell High School, which is a little bit unique compared to our K-8 schedule. Ms. Desmond?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. As you can see, the agenda is there. We're going to quickly talk about where we are with in-person learning, what, what the expansion timeline looks like, and then some of the elements that are essential to a successful reopening expansion for our secondary schools. This graphic we have included in our reopening slide in the past. We are at phase three. We will begin on April 26th, which is next Monday following April vacation. And we will return our secondary students, grades six through 12, for those families who've opted to have their children return to in-person learning. Just in summary, starting back in, on April 5th, we brought back five days a week, our K-5 students, with the full parental option to remain fully remote if, if they so chose. And now we're moving into that third phase, which is April 26th, where five days per week, we will opt for grades six through eight to come in in person if families would like, or if families would like to remain remote, that will be an option as well. And then on April 26th, the high school will have a hybrid return. And just in a moment, we'll move on to a slide that explains the high school hybrid. This slide is just the breakdown of the K-5 in-person and remote enrollments every school and what the numbers look like for our April 5th return and what the numbers look like for the families that chose to remain remote. You'll notice there are middle schools listed here. That's because we did a K to five return to in-person learning. This slide gives us the information not only with the April 5th enrollments, but also what is anticipated based on the survey information to families for an in-person return for April 26th at our secondary schools. And then also the, the remaining families that opted for remote. This slide talks more in-depth about the high school return on April 26th. The high school is planning on approximately 514 students returning to the main building. And we broke those numbers down by house, so you can see the actual house numbers that will be returning. And then the anticipated return of in-person learning for our freshman academy currently is at 3:11. The schedule will be a regular start time of 7:55 a.m. with a dismissal of 12:20 that includes a grab-and-go lunch. And then the remaining afternoon classes will be virtual for our students.
What time do those start?
The transitions throughout the building will follow our social distancing guidelines. And the schedules will remain the same so that the students continue to have the continuity with the relationship with the teachers they've had all year. Are we stopping to?
So I just ask, what time do the afternoon classes start?
So they will take a lunch break at 12:20 and then they will resume, I believe at 1:15? 1:15.
Okay. Thank you.
As a, as a point of reference here, committee, we're still awaiting the formal guidance from the Department of Education. They have suggested that there, that that guidance will be forthcoming. We've received it verbally, where they're going to have some expectations around the mid-May timeframe. Given our school calendar, given the unique context of Lowell High School, and given the extraordinary planning that's gone into an April 26th return, if there were to be a waiver requested of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, this would be it. Just stay tuned. If we hear guidance that for some reason requires a waiver, we would expect it to be approved, given the unique nature of our high school. And we do have confidence in the high school team that built out and worked tirelessly to build out this plan that'll work for students at Lowell High School while maintaining the quality for the remote learners as well. And you can see the numbers here, not surprising that there's a lower or less, or fewer students at the high school level that are choosing to come back in person versus what we saw K to eight. Significantly different percentage when you see the, if you just do the quick math there.
Mr. Dakota on there. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little confused by this particular page because it says return to in-person for the 75% on April 26th. Is, wouldn't 75% of the high school be about 2,700 kids?
So this is what families have selected. So all families have the option of remaining remote if they choose. So of the, so we had 25% that returned to, back a few months ago, right? And then on April 5th and then April 26th, of the 75 that have been fully remote since the beginning of the year, families have had the option to either choose in-person or stay fully remote. So of that 75% that were surveyed, these are the numbers of students that are coming back to in-person learning. The rest will be concurrently taught, remote.
I think it may help if, Ms. Desmond, scroll back to the first slide. It's, it's just part of the language, just given the different phases. So phase one, you'll see there, that was the 25% model that we had in September. The high school was lesser than that, but the, the, the language of 25%, 75% is what's referenced there. So in phase one, that was a K through 12 model. That was the model that we approved in early to mid-August, if I recall. Then phase two was our K through five expansion. Phase three is the six through 12 expansion. So this is of the expansion, and that's the language there that you're seeing, Mr. Dakota. We could certainly clean that up in future slides, so it makes, so it's further, further clarified.
Thank you. And could I ask Ms. Desmond to speak closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. You had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Dr. Boyd touched on it a little bit, but are you confident that the guidance from Desi will not blow up what we have going on here? Does it sound that way, that, that we're on the right track?
I'm confident that the guidance is not going to dissolve what we're doing because I believe we're doing right by kids. It, none of our other planning has required a waiver. They do allow a waiver. You may have heard, seen, like Boston was required to put forward a waiver because their plan was just out of alignment with what the state put forward. Given the late timeline by which they're releasing guidance, and given the unique nature of our high school as the second largest in the state, as well as it being grades nine to 12 and you're seeing the numbers here, I don't anticipate that that guidance is going to cause us to deviate. I do anticipate that there may require us to submit a waiver. And I'm also hopeful that if it requires committee support for that waiver, that the committee may, would support it to keep continuity going, but we'll let you know as we know. The latest we heard, Mr. Dillon, was verbally that there would be guidance forthcoming with a set date of return in mid-May. Now, mid-May, when you're looking at the nature of a school calendar, particularly graduations and seniors completing and so on, that just is, is not practical in terms of the life of a high school. I think Mr. Fiatto and his team did extraordinary work by building out this plan for over 800 young people, which would be the size of two combined high schools. And by Boston standards here, it's a, it's a small fraction of our young people. I just think the team's built out and done extraordinary work. Thank you, Mr. Fiatto, for leading that effort. And if need be, we'll put forward a waiver. We'll see if that's even required.
Okay. Thank you. On, on time as usual, right? With, with the guidance from Desi. Yeah, thank you.
This next slide is just professional development follow-up. As, as you've seen this slide before, we offered the EdCamp format. Lowell High School Department chairs also offered their own professional development because of the uniqueness of the courses that are offered at the high school. So there's just some examples of how many sessions we offered through EdCamp. 93 professional development sessions were offered. The high school again is offering blocks of time where the teams are coming together to develop lessons and discuss concurrent strategies. Staff were surveyed at the end of the professional development. There's some examples of feedback. And again, cameras were distributed to all buildings for concurrent teaching. And then we've also, we ordered, we planned ahead and ordered more cameras so that actually the in-person classes also have access to that so that they can teach concurrently if students have to be out for an extended amount of time. So hopefully that will support students not falling behind. Here are some questions that have been common, that have come up while we've been moving towards an in-person return. Questions such as mask breaks, if they are scheduled and, and by teachers or if they're mandatory. Individual principals have built those into the school schedules. Also, what happens for students who are struggling with wearing masks? We have provided many social stories and we have utilized many behavioral supports to help students who are not comfortable with mask-wearing become more aware and be able to wear masks for the day. Will rooms have purifiers by April 26th? Every single room will not necessarily have a purifier, but the classrooms that are teaching classes will have a purifier. I think that if there are spaces that will be holding groups of children, we will make all of our attempts to ensure that those spaces have purifiers. If there's individual rooms with just an adult, that is not necessarily a room that will have a purifier. Should kids bring their hotspots to school? We've done extensive testing on the networks. We have not seen a problem with the networks because the students that are remaining at home are using their own network. So that does not put a burden on our network. So the only students that are burdened, the only network usage are for students who are in-person. And as you can see, those numbers are significantly smaller than they would if we had a full amount of students in the building. So we haven't had a problem with networks. If a student has a hotspot, they should keep it at home so that they can continue to access needed supports for school at home, you know, when they're doing homework. Is there a plan for internet issues? As I said, we, the IT department has been working extraordinarily hard to ensure that things were updated before we had this 75% return. And we have not seen any significant issues. If our class is assigned to eat in the classroom, how will they do that if they are only three feet apart? For lunch periods, children will be spaced out at six feet in classrooms. Next question is, are parents being informed whether or not their child has transportation? Transportation Department did inform those who were receiving transportation. And the principals and other staff members are also communicating with parents around this, these questions. The procedures for restrooms, again, principals have developed schedules in their buildings. And as we've, we returned the K to five students on April 6th, that, April 5th, excuse me. That, the reason why we had that phased return is so that we could see how things would work, make improvements, and then bring in the next group of students. So I think that that plan, and again, you know, that was a plan that you all agreed to approve, which I think was a plan that made a lot of sense for us because we could really see what needed to be improved upon before our next group of students came in. Do, do we have a plan for emergencies? All of the emergency procedures are still in place. Fire drills will continue to happen so that students are well aware of what needs to, to happen in an emergency. But we will continue to use social distancing guidelines when we are partaking in those drills. Protocols for going to the nurse's office if children need to see the nurse. There are appropriate areas in the buildings. We've, building leaders have made sure that there is space that is still confidential, but also allows for social distancing. And they're managing that and monitoring how that is working. Will there be substitutes available? Yes, we have a list of substitutes. Teachers should continue to have lesson plans prepared for substitutes. And also, we are utilizing our paraprofessional staff in building to also provide substitute supports. Should students leave computers at home? Nope. They, they want to bring their computers in because those computers are the computers they're using in the classroom. So we're at a full one-to-one. And when you are at a one-to-one ratio, the assumption is that the computer is coming back and forth and it's being utilized as a tool for homework and then also for classwork so that we do not have to distribute materials around the classrooms and students aren't sharing materials. Should students, what if a student does not have a computer? All of our students should have computers. We have tech tents throughout the district. We are replacing a, a large number of computers, which we had planned for. So if there is a student who does not have access to a working device, a help desk ticket should be placed immediately by the teacher or the building leader, or the families could go right to the help desk. Or to the tech tent, excuse me. What will arrival look like if we have to manage students coming in both physically and virtually? Principals have developed staggered arrival schedules and dismissal schedules. And again, they're managing that by following all of the social distancing guidelines. The same goes for using lockers. If the lockers can be spaced out appropriately and is safe for students to utilize, they will utilize them based on the principal's discretion. Are students allowed, what are students allowed to bring into the classroom? Students are encouraged to bring in water bottles and also their home lunch, if preferred, as well as any materials and supplies to include their Chromebook. Are there masks provided for students in the buildings? Yes, there are masks. It's part of the PPE supply. And I think that, that covers many of the questions that we've all been receiving. And I think that that covers many of the questions that we've all been receiving. Update on family information sessions?
Before we get to that next slide, let's, we'll just jump in with a couple of questions. Andy, Mr. Dakota, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I'm back on page 12 on the number estimating replacing 30 to 40 broken computers. Is the IT department repairing those on a regular basis? They're busy little beavers over there, aren't they?
They, they are, they are. It is something we anticipated. Some weeks, the numbers are lower, of course. But, you know, depending on what the item is and how it's damaged, much of the work and replacement work can be done in-house.
Good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Are these FAQs up on our website somewhere?
I'm not sure of that, but if they aren't, we'll put them up.
I think it might be useful for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say the same thing. I apologize if I didn't see it. I do see that the expanding in-person learning packet is posted as a YouTube video, which it may be in there. Is that correct, Dr. Boyd? The frequently asked questions, because that's good information.
We can add it if it's not there.
Yeah.
These were the questions actually that were tallied by committee members. So these are the ones that we received from you as requests for the updates. So we can add these to the updates that are in the district package.
That's good, that's good parent information. That can answer a lot of questions, you know? Yeah, thank you.
So just to move on to the family information sessions, as you know, all of our schools had a family information sessions before the April 5th return, including our secondary schools. But several secondary schools have hosted additional sessions to answer questions. There's a few examples listed there. And schools continue to reach out to families on an individual basis to assist them with both questions on in-person and then also for those who are remaining remote, answering their questions as well. Important upcoming dates. Below is a timeline for families. If they have selected to remain remote, we have set dates where they can choose to opt in to in-person. And the reason why we, we've done this is, is so that we can support the families in a, in a, in a strong way. So we want to, we can't just sort of have kids coming in and going out. It would be really hard to support people well like that. So we've provided several dates where families, if they choose to change their mind and come in-person, we would be able to do that. And this is the COVID dashboard. Dr. Hall has provided this. And I think you've seen this in the previous COVID-19 slide deck, but we've added it there again as well. And that concludes the presentation. If anyone has any questions.
Hey, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on that second to last page there with the dates for, yeah. Now is that other, is the 3rd and the 24th, are those just two separate dates for the same group, but it's just another opportunity for them to select in? Okay. I wasn't sure if it was a typo or if it was what we're talking about.
So May 3rd would be the first opt-in date for our K-5 families who opted in for April 5th. So it's approximately four weeks from the time that they opted in.
It's just another opportunity for them.
Then we also have the May 24th for our secondary families. But since we're opening it up, we would allow our K-5 families that other option.
Might as well make it available to them too. Okay. Yeah, that's all I had. Thanks.
Any other questions? Just one quick question. Are we doing anything with the resource officers this year? Dr. Boyd?
The school resource officers, they're going to be needed across all of our schools. So our anticipation is that we'll be back-staffed in partnership with the police department as students are coming back to school. So our secondary students are returning. We would expect the same partnership with the city. So we've had great work with our school resource officers and we're looking forward to that partnership continuing.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next report, I guess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fiatto, the microphone should, is it working now? If not, Mr. Fiatto, feel free, you can come up here and there's a microphone here if you feel more comfortable. Actually, Michael, why don't you do that? Come through here and you can use this one. Then you'll be able to see it on.
Test, 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 test.
Yep. Seems to be.
Does that work? All right.
Microphone's working.
All right. So here, Mr. Fiatto, Chair, a brief presentation on secondary toward design. The committee, you have a larger report that gives you a packet. That packet is also public, but all of these conversations, as you hear from Mr. Fiatto, happen on a continuous basis within the community. So the ten years that they do that, the committee, so to follow our quarter presentation than the report we have in the packet. Mr. Fiatto, continue.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. And thank you to Mayor and School Committee for allowing me to provide some updates on the high school. I've really enjoyed my time at Lowell High School and will continue to work very hard for our students and families and our teachers to provide great educational opportunities. So what I'm prepared to do today is provide an overview of our presentation, which outlines the need for change, immediate steps for improvement, some long-term redesign plans, organizational and administrative alignment to go with those plans, a construction update, and end of the, end of the year and important dates for our school and community. As we look at what we're trying to develop at the high school, we ask ourselves, what are the skills, knowledge, values that we want for our students? What do we want our students to know and be able to do by the time they graduate? And we've embarked on this year-long process called the Portrait of a Graduate, which will be finalized very soon. And it's a collaborative effort that is really helping to reframe what that classroom learning experience should be for our students, based on those qualities that have come to light as far as what our community, teachers, students, alumni, business owners, higher education representatives are saying that are the very most important things that students should know and be able to do by the time they graduate. And as we outline this presentation, what are the instructional vision and what are the organizational structures that are going to be needed to make sure that we can make that happen for our students? So I'll be able to explain a little bit more about the Portrait of a Graduate as we go through this presentation. But we first have to ask ourselves, why do we need to change? Do we need to change? And as, as I learn more about the community, I find that the high school has worked very, very well for lots of families and lots of students. And there's an incredible amount of success, success stories that have transpired over the 169 years that the school has been in existence. And we look around this room and we know that there are many Lowell High School graduates here and Lowell High School graduates on the staff. It's an amazing staff that are proud to say they're graduates of Lowell High. But we also have to bear into consideration the fact that it's, the, the outcomes are not working for all of our students. And one example is, is something that we really need to take a look at. Graduation rates for various groups in our, that represent the high school. And one of those numbers is extremely low. For example, less than half of our students with disabilities graduated in 2019. And that's 25% lower than the state average. And we also want to take a look at some discipline data that shows that there's a disproportionately higher percentage of out-of-school suspensions for Hispanic and Latinx students compared to the overall student population. So we really need to take a look at some of those outliers that are causing us to see some opportunity gaps and disparate outcomes for our school's diverse populations. But as we engage in this process, we're really trying to take a collaborative approach by working with our stakeholders, our community partners, our various, not only community partners outside of the school, external partners, but forming, as, as a new head of school, really trying to form some partnerships within the school, looking at our instructional leadership team, school site councils, meeting with student advisory groups and forming student advisory groups, meeting with them every Friday, working with, closely with our teachers and our teachers' union to make sure that we're hearing all voices as we support our collaborative efforts in this process. And as we, as we, as I get to know the school and gather data and seek feedback and get input, we've come up with some immediate next steps for improvement, which I think in the short term will help drive some positive outcomes for our students and community. One is leadership development and use of data. This is a big school. It's, as, as Dr. Boyd said, right? Thirty-two, 3,200 students with 3, 400 staff, depending on both pedagogical and in, and in support. So how are we going to leverage data to drive instruction and also to have it at our fingertips so that our teachers, staff, faculty have information that they can use? And so we really need to do a good job at organizing our data and providing real-time data. And what is the, as far as instructional capacity, what is our vision for instruction for all students? So that students with disabilities and English-language learners are going to be provided with a high-quality educational opportunity. And we can start to reverse those trends where we see students who are being suspended at high rates and who are dropping out at high rates, staying in school, finishing school and obtaining that diploma. And our instructional leadership team is working closely to develop and look at a model called Universal Design for Learning. I believe some other schools may embrace this across the district. But this gives us a chance to bridge that equity gap and give students various entry points and teachers various methodologies to access learning for all students. And as we try to determine, what is the vision for the high school, coming under one umbrella, one Lowell High School, having a common format for looking at writing for, as an example, writing across the curriculum, using a common language, common rubrics, looking at data, having teachers work in PLCs, professional learning communities. And that speaks to our proposal at the beginning where we want to provide more professional development for our teachers to be able to do that work. And if we want to reverse the course of students being suspended, how can we incorporate more restorative practices as opposed to simply punitive? Where students do have to pay some sort of a consequence, but that consequence doesn't have to be just learned, leaving class and sitting in-house, but learning from their opportunities, learning from their mistakes, having more positive student interaction and opportunities for restorative practices. And then are all secondary, all post-secondary, all students should have access to some sort of a post-secondary plan. So pathways and partnerships are in place. We want to learn what's working, what's currently working for students and what are some things that we need to improve on so that all students graduate with the plan. And I wanted to share this Portrait of a Graduate flyer, but it's more than a flyer because it really outlines the six competencies that were developed through a community action research project. And it's nearing 100% completion. But if you're an employer or if you're, if you want to be an entrepreneur as a student, if you are a college admissions officer, what are you looking for in a high school graduate? What do we want students to know and be able to do by the time they graduate? And this process led to these six competencies. And I'll just read them really quickly, but it's really important to note that they're, I think they're incredible because they're not, not only, they're, they're both, they're both soft skills, but they're also content-driven. So mind, heart, spirit, skills, network, and leadership. And within each of those competencies, they're underlying 21st century skills. And some employers might call them soft skills. But how do we teach those explicitly in the classroom so that a student can learn about perseverance, about being a good citizen, about approaching learning and work and overcoming challenges and obstacles? And our goal for the next year to two years is working with our staff to incorporate those skills into the curriculum so that they are part of what we do, not, not a document on the side, but really incorporate the, the vision of what this Portrait of a Graduate could be for our students. And I always try to say, if you can't see something, how can you imagine it? How can you dream it if you can't experience it? So high-quality pathways is an opportunity where we believe all students should have an opportunity to engage in at least one high-quality pathway. And it could be early college or the Early College Promise Program, where students take dual enrollment credits at the high school and could graduate with, the goal here is in, in, in two or three years, that students earn an associate's degree while they're in high school. And we believe that with the right planning, we can, we can build a, build out a early college experience, saving students lots of money and also increasing their chances of persevering and persisting and reaching a degree, both not only a high school diploma, which is a, which is a great benchmark, but it's not the end goal. That high, that college degree or other type of training opportunity is the end goal. And we are one of 31 schools in Massachusetts that are considered a innovation pathway high school. We have innovation pathways. We have career pathways. How can we ensure that those pathways lead to exposure and experience for students, both in the classroom and engaging our community partners? So students having access to internships and other types of opportunities where they can start to dream about what they would like to be when they grow up. And our After Dark CTE program, I'm not sure what the knowledges of this group, but I'll briefly explain that we have students at Lowell High School who are engaging with, in a dual enrollment program with Greater Lawrence Technical High School. And that program affords our students a chance to take high school courses and then go out over to the vocational school and take an IT tech, IT course and/or an advanced manufacturing course. And those are careers, those are careers that have been proven to be, right now, there are more jobs than there are skilled professionals, especially with the advanced technology, advanced manufacturing. Next year, we're going to be adding a component of auto body, automotive technology. And that's going to be a big hit because many students do want to get into a career in automotive technology, but they still would like to be at the high school. And this gives them an opportunity to do both. So we'll be doubling our program, our programmatic goals through the after, with the After Dark program next year. As, as we think about long-term redesign, what does it look like in the next two to, three to five years? We want to continue to engage in implementation phase of the Portrait of a Graduate. So the Portrait of a Graduate is being built out. So the next year is, how do we incorporate that into the curriculum, into the fabric of what we're doing? Constructing a vision for teaching and learning aligned with the new instructional vision that supports the Portrait of a Graduate work. And developing the required, required programmatic structures to support students, staff, and families. So we can have all of these programs, but if the structure doesn't support long-term sustainability of these programs, we really need to take a look at what the structure is, is telling us. And it's, it's a goal of ours is to ensure that all students have some sort of a post-secondary pathway. And we want to ensure that a Lowell High School diploma means that if a student graduates from Lowell High School, that they have met a certain set of competencies and will walk away with a plan. And that plan might, might be college, military, or a career. And through the work, starting backwards mapping from ninth grade, students will have an opportunity to have some agency on their, on that plan, but also be on the back end of receiving tons of support, not only from teachers, counselors, but within the community as well. One, so in terms of some of these outcomes, we're looking at industry-specific pathways. What are the pathways that are going to generate some long-term sustainable economic opportunities for our students that line up also with what's being offered at our community college? Internships, we want to build out those internship programs, continue with college courses, and offer professional certifications for students who may want to go right into the workforce but still have an advantage with regards to some professional certifications. Apprenticeships that are being offered through the After Dark program, great opportunities for our young people when they graduate from this program. They'll be able to get into an apprenticeship that would lead right to a high-paying job. And remote learning opportunities. We know that there are many students that have done really well in remote learning. There are many students that are, would, would benefit from continuing in a, in a model like that. So we're looking at some opportunities through a proposal submitted to DESI from the Office of Teaching and Learning to provide a, an opportunity for more students to engage in remote learning where it's, where it meets their needs and, and providing almost like that anytime, anywhere learning model. In order to enact our first phase of, of our long-term, or short-term reform, I'm going to be proposing through the school committee, a position, a new position called Associate Head of School. And with that position, it's going to be dedicated towards increasing the amount of feedback and professional support that our department heads and other staff can receive to be able to work with teachers, develop more professional development opportunities, and expand academic and opportunities for our students. Again, this is pending school committee approval and would happy, be happy to talk more about that. I talked a little bit about data and access to data. And currently, there's a lot of data available, but it's not, it's not, it's not provided or offered in a consistent and a systematic way. So I'm looking for an, a position where we would have a school-level administrative position, provide that type of real-time data, and assist us with creating data and systems to champion the use of data to improve outcomes for students. Our instructional leadership team, our teachers, our teacher teams and administrators and our families really deserve to have real-time data at their fingertips to allow them to make those types of decisions, instructional decisions, and also decisions about how we're moving our students forward. And as we've talked about a little bit and I've heard tonight, the, with, with regards to playgrounds being a being an amazing opportunity for young people to get outside, we know that there's going to be a need for more mental health and SEL support at the high, at all of our schools. So I'm proposing adding another social worker to, to our program. And that social worker would be a part of what we formerly would call in-house suspension, but I'd like to reframe that and call that a learning center and provide a, a social worker in, in that room to help our students and work with our staff to really reframe what in-house suspension is and give our students a chance to, to, to reflect on how they can improve, but also give them an opportunity to get some real-world skills to be able to go back into the classroom, reduce the amount of suspensions and loss of learning time. So one question that came up today was ours, high school construction. What I've been doing, and I send out a Monday memo every Monday, and on that, every, at least every other week, I'm, we're providing an update to our school around the construction. We send some pictures, so man, this happens fast, right? So one day you walk out and it's just bare land, and they've done a nice job of leveling. And two days later, we have beams up. And now we have a couple of stories of beams up. So even this picture, which was pretty recent, is now, is now older because the incredible work that the team is doing. So I put together a, a very brief, but I think important update where we're outlining some key markers throughout the construction process. And so we are happy to say that we are on schedule and on budget. I think it's been incredible work that we've seen the team doing outside, building a new fieldhouse. And our students are going to be, and our faculty will, and our community will have access to a new fieldhouse in less than two years from now. So we'll start to see some of this new construction really take shape once that fieldhouse is created. But then, as you can see from this timeline, we're thoughtfully putting together a plan to ensure that by fall of '26, the construction is completed. I attend with Mr. Underwood and Dr. Howe, weekly meetings that are done through our partners, our construction partners, to stay abreast of all of the construction updates. And that allows me to report back out to the community of what's, what's happening and the things that we believe are important for our staff to know. One, one, just something that comes to mind is the new elevator shaft being put into the 1980 building. And there'll be minimal disruption to services because it's going to be happening throughout the summer and should be ready to go by the time we come back to school in the fall.
Pause there for a second. Yeah, pause there for a second because I, it appears this is top of mind for some committee members. Mr. Underwood's also here if there are further questions beyond Mr. Mr. Fiatto's role. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to pause here and see if there are any questions from the committee on construction that either Mr. Fiatto or Mr. Underwood could answer.
Sure, are there any questions? Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, not, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Not really a question, but I, you know, I, I've heard, I guess faintly what's going on a little bit. You know, and this all looks very similar to, you know, plans that we've heard. It was more about, we just, I just haven't been hearing it here. And I think, you know, this is a huge, this is a huge deal for the city, and we should, we should know all the information to be able to talk to people about it, you know? So I, I don't, you know, I don't particularly have any questions right now, but it was just more of, you know, staying, staying updated in the future. Thanks. And, you know, I can probably do a better job at it too. But it would help if we all, you know, we all push that information. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we know we're going to be facing severe shortages in our craftsmen, is there, has there been any conversation with the, the after-school basically association with the vocational school to offer carpentry, plumbing, and electricians as well? Because I know the vocational school is like jam-packed. They can't take any other students. So is there something that we can produce to, to help with that?
There is some sort of apprentice program happening, so.
There is? Okay, okay. Oh, by the way, I, I love the logo for the early college Lowell. That's really clever. I did have, I did have a question back on the need for change on the discipline data with Hispanics. Is, has there, is, is there an answer as to why so many Hispanic students were being suspended?
So I, I think that's a, that's a complex answer. That relates to much of our discussions around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices, how we engage students over time. And so I think what I, what I might suggest there is that might be a deeper discussion than a simple answer could be right at, at the days. But it's an important data point, and it's not only at Lowell High School. So there's disproportionality, we say, meaning that there's a greater proportion of disciplinary incidents compared to the population size across our district. And that disproportionality exists across racial and linguistic lines, particularly related to our Hispanic students, students who identify as Latina, Latino. So I think it might benefit the committee to have a deeper dive discussion on that as a standalone conversation rather than having Mr. Fiatto try to answer it in a, in a one sentence that might do a disservice to the complexity of the issue. Requires ongoing, ongoing analysis, and it's going to require both ongoing training as well as different approaches to intervention, as you heard Mr. Fiatto say.
Certainly, the first step in solving a problem is identifying that there is a problem. So that's, that's, that's out there. We want, we want to be very transparent that we, we recognize that it's an issue and want to work with the community to really address why those disparities exist.
And I would say this, this is the short end of it. Disparate outcomes mean disparate treatment. We've got to understand how, how students are being treated differently, understand that from a systemic level. Disparate outcomes, if we have 30% of our student population is Hispanic, then we would expect 30% of our suspensions to be Hispanic for Hispanic students. Disproportionality means that it's a far greater percentage than there are percentage of students. So we're not seeing the same correlation between student population and suspension outcomes. There's not the same percentage as students as suspensions. That's the disproportionality that's been identified. So significant analysis going into it, understanding that we've got some work to do to change the environment and to change our work so that we can improve outcomes for kids.
Sure, one more, go ahead.
Just to, like, to comment on what you just said. This is not a new phenomenon. This has been happening at Lowell High School since I was there. So it's, it's been an issue that, that they've been trying to address for a very long time. So hopefully, we can kind of come up with a better solution to that. Thank you.
Mr. Yellen?
Yeah, thank you. I guess while we're on suspensions, can, can we talk about what we're at with suspensions in the district? It's a tough indicator on discipline to use just suspensions. And, and I know there are administrators in the city that, you know, it's, you don't want to remove a kid from the school, but in safety, in issues where there is a safety concern, you know, removing a child from the situation can be beneficial. And whether that's an out-of-school suspension or we have, you know, we have plans to do more in-school and working with those kids, that's fine. But I guess I would just be hesitant to, you know, eliminate suspensions because it does have value when it becomes a safety concern, especially within a specific classroom or, you know, there are a million different scenarios. But, you know, I don't, I don't, I just don't think we want to eliminate the, the process because administrators need that ability sometimes, you know? Thank you.
Yeah, so there's, there's no policy decision to eliminate out-of-school suspensions. And as you referenced, Mr. Dillon, it's one indicator of the overall school climate. We look at out-of-school suspensions, we look at behavioral infractions, we look at in-school suspensions. We look at all of the, all of the discipline data as indicators of the overall school climate. The data that Mr. Fiatto is sharing related to out-of-school suspension, we saw spikes in out-of-school suspensions for the year immediately preceding my arrival to the district. So the data that I received upon arrival to the district showed increases in suspensions, particularly at the secondary level. Obviously, moving to COVID, moving through COVID and a shift to remote learning, that data's not as indicative of our overall climate. Students are significantly less likely to require that type of intervention within a remote environment. However, we know, coming back to in-person learning, if we haven't done anything differently there, then the data's going to continue to trend in the same direction that it had been trending. So you're going to see within, when you, Finance Subcommittee meeting on Monday, you'll see a, a plan within our ESER funding around climate specialists at each of our Renaissance schools. You'll see additions of social workers as Mr. Fiatto suggested, as well as comprehensive planning around creating climates that are truly reflective of the students we serve and empowering student voice within our communities. It's going to require a significant amount of work and changes in adult behavior that then can facilitate changes in student behavior. But yeah, it's, it's a data point that the committee should be aware of. It's a data point that we should continue to analyze. It's not the only data point, nor is a policy of just eliminating out-of-school suspensions an appropriate response to that, that data. So we're working through it with the level of complexity and the level of understanding that it requires.
Okay, yeah, I was just, you know, it's something that administrators need at their disposal sometimes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Arnie?
Thank you, and I actually had a couple of comments and questions. First, I want to tell you, I really enjoyed the report. I thought there were a lot of good specifics. And I think, as was already mentioned, this idea of expressing what our needs are. You know, that one of the things you mentioned in the report was keeping kids engaged, especially in a remote environment. And we all know that's been a challenge for many of our families, whatever the age, you know, right down to the, the young ones, to the high school ones. But I want to thank you for the time and effort in communicating all this information to us. I found it very informative. A couple of things, I'm wondering if you could give us an example of Universal Design for Learning, UDL. I know it's not that new, but I think that it's kind of a jargon term that many of our millions of viewers, as Dr. Boyd likes to say, might not be familiar with. So how would you, maybe an example of how would you define UDL?
How do we provide, it's, if I look at UDL as a way to increase equity, increase opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning in various ways? For example, expression. How can students express their learning? There's, there may be multiple ways of expressing a, a project or an outcome, a student outcome. It could be through a test, it could be through a performance task, it could be through a speech, a play, oral, written, communication, a video. At the high school, we have a lot of different opportunities to provide ways in which students can provide, share their understandings and give teachers more flexibility in offering multiple ways for students to demonstrate their learning so that it's not this narrow focus of it has to be a pen and paper test. But it, but it's, we have to be careful about it because we want to provide teachers with opportunities for training. And this is where the PLCs come into play, professional learning communities. So teachers will have opportunities throughout the year to become more immersed in universal design for learning. This provides students with various ways of demonstrating mastery or providing teachers with various methodologies for looking at expression, student engagement, and ways in which students can access the curriculum in different, at different, at different levels, but still reaching the same standard, which is, it's tricky, and it's not, but it's not a one-size-fits-all model. It really provides more latitude and gives teachers and students some choice in how they learn and not necessarily what they learn, because the standards are the standards, but it's how we get there.
And I think it would also engage them more if they have some opportunity to express their learning in different ways. You mentioned in the report that you were doing some spring break programming. And I'm wondering, we are in that right now. Can you give me an example of what you meant by that?
Yeah, so there are students, for example, our English, we have our English Chair, Dr. Keefe, and her teachers have provided students with extra time during this week to finish their assignments and catch up. So there's kind of different benchmarks. So they had, the first benchmark was over the weekend to complete. If they didn't complete their work, if these are students that were in that cutoff range of, uh, it was like about a 68 to a 63. So with a little extra push, we can get them into the passing range, from the failing range to the passing range. These are not students necessarily have a zero average, but students that have done some work, but really need that extra push. So we have some folks calling this week and calling the students to say, we noticed that you didn't log in and you didn't complete. And we've got some information today that shows that more students have completed the work over the spring break that, because of the work and the outreach of our parent liaisons. But the opportunity's there. Sometimes the students need a little guidance and a little bit of a push to get some, to motivate them to say, you know what, if I do this, I can turn an F into a D. And it's really what I was supposed to be doing anyway. But we understand that we're in a really strange and unique times. And that extra push is really what our students need. So it's been a, a great community effort to allow our students that extra chance. In February, we did offer not only this type of work, but early college classes in February. So we had students who are kind of on track and to graduate, but through Middlesex Community College. We had about, about 80 students complete a one-credit course in one week.
Wow.
At, at Middlesex during February vacation. And we'll be doing that in the summer as well.
That actually was the other thing I wanted to talk about because, and I know you might not know this, but perhaps Ms. Desmond does. We, you listed 1,120 students participating in early college. To me, it seems like we typically had more like 300 or 400. So is that really?
I want to explain how we got that number because I don't want to be, I don't want it to deceive anyone. All of our freshmen take a one-credit course.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
So that immediately tripled the number, right?
But there's 250 11th and 12th graders. And then our 10th graders next year will also be taking a one-credit course. So all 9th graders and all 10th graders are taking now one-credit early experience course. So it's an opportunity to get their foot in the door, they learn about the early college program. Now, one credit is not going to make or break your college career, but it is going to provide the student with an understanding of what early, what college classes look like. And also, it gives them an overview of all of the different majors that they could major in. And it also gives them some opportunities to do some career exploration at the 9th grade level.
It's fantastic because what it gives these kids is they can imagine themselves in college. Now, I know for my kids, right from the get-go, it was assumed, expected, you're going to get good grades and you're going to go to college. But for many of our families, especially our immigrant families, whose parents didn't have the opportunity to go to college, you know, to have that one-credit course, now they can see themselves in a college environment. I, I love it, it's fantastic. It's very, very exciting to see these moves in this direction. I think it's, it's really positive. And I, I don't want to keep you here all night, I know I'll get in trouble with the mayor. Just had a couple of more quick things regarding the, the Associate Head of School. Now, are you imagining that, because we had a position, the number-two position, and I can't remember the title. It seems like it's very similar. Are you aware of what the prior position was?
Curriculum and Director of Curriculum Instruction?
Because.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
It was, there was multiples, Ms. Arnie.
I think it was Amy, I can't think of her last name.
Well, Dr. Jack, and it was, yeah, curriculum.
Okay, so my question is, it seems like, based on the job description, that it's very focused on curriculum and instruction, which, this is not a problem for me. My question is, when you look at the organizational chart, and even in your report, you mentioned how it's going to be a support for the department heads. But the department heads don't report to this person, right? So how, how do you see that working?
This is a, what I see, this is a very nimble leadership position. And some, we're really looking for someone that has curriculum, curriculum experience at the secondary level, but also could have some turnaround experience in an urban district, understanding what our goals are as a, as a school that's still in high school turnaround. So it would be working closely with me as the head of school, but also with all of our, all of our departments, but in particular curriculum because having a real focus on curriculum and really tightening our curriculum is going to help us enact all of these early college programs. If we have a strong curriculum, more students will be able to access early college. If we have a really robust curriculum at the 9th and 10th grade level, those, we're going to see our early college numbers grow. We're also going to see our, our success grow, we're going to see more students engaged. So having that instructional leadership at the, in this position to work with our department chairs, but also to work with our, all of our leaders and teachers. So this is a draft organizational chart. We can really. We can really revisit that, but the goal here is a position that is going to be able, in a school this size, to be able to provide that level of leadership that's necessary to help move our school forward, so that answers are given in a timely fashion and, and, and developing clear lines of communication to and through, um, the head of school, all the way, uh, across our organizational structure.
So if you can pause, Mr. Fiatto, because it, uh, Ms. Doherty, I think, it, your frame of reference, depending on what frame of reference you're using for, what era of the high school, would change the title and description of a so-called Number Two. Uh, there was a different iteration. I have, uh, somebody just last week brought in a picture from Henry Maraz's retirement, and it was a picture of all of the administrators. And at that time, there was a different Number Two that was at the high school at that time. I think I sent you all a picture of.
Yeah.
That picture. Uh, and I learned even more titles then. And then, you're right, at, at one iteration, I believe, when, uh, uh, Mr. Martin was the head of school, the position had a, a different title. Well, as, the reason for that is as the laws surrounding our high schools, as our, our knowledge about how high schools work, what makes high schools work, and the needs of each head of school and each, uh, system that support the head of school, there's a different need around that Number Two position. But not having a Number Two is a real gap. Now, what, uh, Mr. Fiatto is identifying is a vastly different job than any of those other jobs were, while it still accounts for much of the roles that you're talking about. Instructional leadership is essential to every principal's responsibility. Uh, I couldn't hire a head of school that, that wasn't equipped to be an instructional leader, and he can't appoint an associate head of school that's not equipped to be an instructional leader. But what's really missing within the structure there, if Mr. Fiatto is out for any given reason, it's such a flat organizational chart at the high school, uh, that there's not a natural hierarchy or a natural supervision, particularly as you think about COVID times, there was a risk for Mr. Fiatto to be out for extended periods of time. What that have, would have required within our current structure is Dr. Guillory would have had to move over to the high school, because there's not that natural, um, hierarchy. So this allows for not only added instructional leadership, but as you heard, uh, Mr. Fiatto share, the, uh, a sense of being nimble and flexible to where that person can actually step in to Mr. Fiatto's role on any given day if there needs to be that, uh, occurrence. So, uh, depending on what iteration for anyone viewing through the community, I believe actually, uh, Mayor, the last time you were on the school committee, there was a different iteration of, uh, Number Two than, um, what was there with Mr. Martin, but I had a brief conversation with Mr. Martin. He had a, a different Number Two. He said, uh, he actually shared that, uh, this organizational chart that, uh, Mr. Fiatto's putting forward looks very similar to what he had, was that five years ago? Does anybody remember the timeframe? Ms. Desmond?
Probably, yep.
How long ago was it when, uh, Mr. Martin was the head of school over at Lowell High School?
Four years ago.
Four years ago? I was close. I, I was close. I was close. But I think the important point here is also that this is an ongoing redesign process. So this step here should be seen as step one in an ongoing process as the community's involved, as the plans are built out, because it's a multi-year redesign. There's some significant work there that we have to do to build on the success and overcome or narrow those gaps, those opportunity gaps that, that currently exist. So, uh, I'm looking forward to additional conversation on this. This certainly was part of the school-based budgeting process, and we'll be coming forward to the committee, uh, for approval within the budgeting, uh, within the full budget. I would suggest, though, we, uh, move on just briefly to the next slide. You have every, all of these next steps in the packet. However, there was specific question about graduation. So you have Mr. Fiatto here. Uh, any questions specifically about graduation? Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest we allow Mr. Fiatto to get back to his family and, uh, we accept the report.
All right. Any questions on graduation, Ms. Doherty?
Um, what day is June 14th, the day you're thinking of? That's a Monday?
We have confirmation that it will be on June 14th.
Is that a Monday?
Yes.
I'm actually out of state for a wedding. That's Saturday, but, okay. Will you have a rain date, or is it?
We have a rain date, the 15th through the 17th.
Okay.
That answered my question. Mr. Dakota?
That answered my question, yes.
Okay. And all, all videotaped again like last year?
The majority of it will be, continue to have a virtual, uh, speakers, commencement speakers, uh, virtually, but, you know, we'll do the best we can to make it engaging. Uh, and, and, the Department of Ed has given us some guidance around graduation commencement ceremonies, and they're continuing to impress upon us the need for brevity, um, to ensure that we, um, uh, we socially distance appropriately. So we'll be having two sessions, um, to divide, we'll divide, we'll have two houses at a time. We won't have to do four, which would be, I think, a relief for our families and community, but two, I think, is appropriate at this point, given the size of our graduating class of about 700 and plus students.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you. Um, maybe, Mr. Fiatto, on that guidance, um, what, are we stuck at only two members of the family attending? I mean, if we're having it at La Lasha Park, is, is that where, where we're?
That would be at La Lasha Park, yeah.
I mean, that's a big door, big outdoor facility. Is it, is there, I'm just thinking. I mean, you know, la, last year it was really limited, you know? You're picking and choosing between grandma and, you know, I mean, uh, it's tough, so I guess, you know, if, if we could somehow.
Well, we're, we're hopeful, Mr. Dillon. I, I do think, um, last year, as a school district and as a school community, we got as close to a typical graduation ceremony as any district in the Commonwealth, as I talked to other superintendents. This is going to get us closer. We're now not going down from, uh, four to two. Uh, it's disappointing to some of our students that we can't just do one. We're confident we're not going to be able to do one. In terms of tickets, as much as we can offer, uh, as the guidance continues to evolve, this is now mid-June. Uh, this, again, is getting closer to a more typical graduation date. Last year, you remember, we were, we were far in advance into the summer. So the closest we can come to a typical graduation ceremony while abiding by the COVID guidelines, that's what we're going to do. Uh, so we'll get the information out as soon as we can. If we can evolve it and increase capacity as the, the vaccine evolves, we're going to do that. If, uh, we see the COVID numbers come down and we get additional guidance, we're going to do that. We're going to, we're going to reach for as close as we can come, because it's a, while we, as adults and as educators, have a graduation every year for our kids and our families, this is the only gr, high school graduation.
Sure.
That they're going to have.
Yep.
And we take that seriously. We know it's a, a milestone in a young person's life. I'm sure all of you remember your high school graduation. I certainly do. I can't remember all of my high school experiences, but high school graduation, I certainly remember. Uh, so that's our commitment. We believe that's the commitment of the, um, committee as we move forward, and we'll continue to update you as we go. This is hot off the press, though, with confirmation of June 14th, and we'll continue to get you details, uh, and a special thank you to the, the mayor, who's been working on graduation organization behind the scenes. People don't know, I don't think, in the community, so the mayor's been working on this one. So thank you to the mayor as well, who's been active in this process.
Yeah, and I, you know, we did a great job last year, in the, in the situation last year, to, to provide a graduation, and it does seem like we're even, you know, going to do better. I just, it, you know, at this point, it just seems, man, that's a big open space, you know, and so, yeah, that'd be great to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fiatto.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on. We've got full agenda, so we'll move on to the next reports. Update on, uh, where are we? Reports on the motions?
We're on the motions. They're all expertly written and hand-delivered, uh, here for the committee's review.
Any questions on that, or if we get right to A3.1, response motion. Uh, Mr. Dakota, any questions on that? What? Do you have questions on the whole report?
Well, I think we have a number of reports that were in our packet.
Right. But the first one's the motion is the, like, the quarterly report, right?
Right, but do you think we should just go from, all right, yeah.
Why not? I get confused on this.
All right, I'll just, I'll go, we'll go with the reports that are.
3.1, or do you talk about this?
Okay.
Okay, so A3.1, Mr. Dakota, any questions on the selection process?
Which one is?
Start with you, and then we'll get into it. A3.1.
Right. In, in reference to what, um, was provided here on this.
School Site Council, yeah.
Did, did, was there any, uh, school that had an issue with getting that School Site Council up and running? And what, what were the reasons for that? I mean, were there not enough parents signing up for it, or what, what was?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll tell you the, the, the twofold answer to that, absent Ms. Phillips being here, who was act, um, actively involved. We were, um, in 2019 significantly behind as a district where we should be with our School Site Council formation and development. So in some ways, it was, one, just a, a lack of organization as a district around the process, and, two, a lack of awareness of what the process was. So there was a significant amount of organization and also education that went in. That process of organization and education moved quicker or slower, depending on how far along the school was. So as a district, while we're far, far behind as a system, there was a lot of variability with where our schools were. So some schools were already, uh, far along that process. Basically, they had been organizing despite the lack of support system-wide, uh, so they were moving quickly. Schools that had historically not had an active School Site Council required more support, more organization, more education, not only of the school, but also of the school community, um, and that took some time. But what, uh, Ms. Phillips is reporting here is no, no anomalies by way of active creation of obstacles. Those obstacles that were found were, were natural obstacles that were, were worked through as we supported schools through this process.
Is it your opinion, then, that, uh, maybe there is a leveling of, of what's being serviced in terms of these School Site Councils through, all, right across the board?
This year is better than, uh, this year was an improvement over last year. Next year will be an improvement over this year. I feel far more confident, speaking to you right now, uh, about the quality and capacity of the work that's happening within our School Site Councils, uh, than last year. And last year, I was significantly more confident at this time of year, um, than, to be honest with you, I was surprised with the state of our School Site Councils in this district when I came into this district in, in August, and I think the school committee shared that surprise. I think some of you, as committee members, shared that concern with me, um, even prior to some of the school community sharing that. So, um, I think we're, we're continuing to improve at a rate that would be more accelerated if we weren't all remote, um, you know, so then some added adjustments here this year, given the, the circumstances of the pandemic, but, but progress nonetheless.
I thank you, and, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we could probably revisit and see how things are going next year. Thank you.
Every year will be a great health check.
Yep.
Ms., Joe, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that, uh, the motion we approved tonight to get the information from each School Site Council about the representative process, the number of meetings they had this year, uh, who their members are, as well as the, you know, the guiding principles of their quality improvement plans, are going to give us the full picture. Um, I, I have to say, I was frustrated. And this document was delivered Friday night, so I didn't see it before I made my motion. I had to get that into Minerva during the day on Friday. But some of the things that we've been asking about, I mean, it's been several times it's been brought up, because I want to remind you, we have given money and empowered these groups to make decisions. Um, and so it behooves us to play, pay close attention to how these groups are working. And Dr. Boyd is correct, we did not have active School Site Councils at every one of our schools, but we pushed forward with a very ambitious plan last year's budget to provide this empowerment to these groups. And, um, this motion that you made, Mr. Dakota, was, um, February 19th, and Ms. Phillips' date of this memo was March 12th, and here it is April 21, and we're having our first budget meeting on Monday. That's what prompted me to make that motion tonight, because we were asking for the details, and we still, we need to get them, because as Mr. Fiatto just said to us, when we know where the weaknesses are and we admit it, and then we can address it. So I think we have, I agree with Dr. Boyd, we've made a great deal of progress, uh, certainly from where we started with School Site Councils, uh, but I'm, I'm, I don't think it's, uh, behooves us to sit back and just do an overview. We need to look at each School Site Council and approve, review how they're doing their representative, uh, process, approve it as the state mandates, and move forward with, will I be able to identify those ones that maybe need additional help by, by that process?
Yes, so just by way of timeline, remember, in March, March, the entire world, uh, took a U-turn, uh, with a February motion to March, and then the March 12th motion here, there was a request from the committee for us to abbreviate, uh, the Second March Meeting, given the fact that it was on St. Patrick's Day, hence the reason to move all of the March motion responses back down to April. So that was a, in response to a committee request, and Mr. Dakota, unfortunately, was unable to attend that particular meeting as well.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Um, and I did have an opportunity while we were discussing, um, Ms. Doherty's motion before, uh, just to go on to the website again, I think I mentioned this at the February meeting as well, that there really is some good information on each school website about the School Site Councils, including, uh, the membership, um, the minutes and agenda items, the dates. Um, so I think it sounds like we'll be getting a more comprehensive report with maybe all of that detail in one document, but there, there really is a lot of good information on our school websites that I would encourage our community members, parents, teachers to take a look. Um, you know, I think we can always be doing more, um, but, but I think overall, as it's been pointed out a few times tonight, that we've, these are huge strides forward to even have this information up and to be able to see our parent representation, our teacher representation, dates of meetings, meeting agendas. I even saw some documents that showed the budget approval process, um, right there. And, and I want to just say thank you again to the, the team who has made a big effort to get that information out there, um, on every school website, and, um, and, and thank you to the people who continue to just to get that data out there, um, as rapidly as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I think we do need to keep in mind that, you know, prior to, two years ago, we had very, very little to do with School Site Councils in this city. Um, you know, a, a lot of work has happened, and like Ms. Clark said, again, um, there is very sufficient information on all of these groups on the particular websites, and I would find it hard to believe that anybody looking to get involved, um, could, you know, any, anything, just a phone call to the principal or to the school could, could probably make that happen. So, um, you know, we, it, it's only been a very short time since we've been doing this even close to correctly, so, um, you know, a lot of work has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next report, I guess, then? Uh, A3.2, Ms. Doherty, any questions on that?
Is that the Citywide Family Council one?
Uh, comprehensive data-driven report on remote learning.
Oh, about remote learning?
Yep.
Uh, yes, let me just, that one. I guess I had a minute, I was, thought we were going to go by the order of the quarterly reports. Um, yeah, so there was, this was good, there was a lot of information in here. Um, I feel like I made the motion in December, there was a miscommunication, I, I'll own my piece of that, that I wasn't clear on what I was looking for, and there wa, there wasn't reach out to get clarification. But I really, my whole intention with the remote learning was kind of like the School Site Council motion tonight. We had been talking about, we need this information, we need that information, and we weren't getting it. So by December, we had 75% of our students, actually more than that, because the 25% were in-person, I think, for a few weeks, and then everybody went remote. So we had 97% of our students were doing remote learning, and I was hearing a lot of questions, like the questions we got tonight about, and, uh, Ms. Desmond kindly read all the questions and answers, I think there were about 25 questions. Those was, those questions were circulating before the kids went back, April 5th, and we got the information out, and I think it's a great idea to put on the website.[1787.58] This was happening up until early December, that there were a lot of concerns about the remote learning. So we got it, there's good information here. I think there's been a lot of lessons learned in terms of how we'll continue to have this remote piece. I understand from what the head of high school said, remote learning is not going away, it's going to be an option for us down the road perhaps. But it would have been more timely to have gotten it sooner. That's the only thing I want to say with that. And then just a couple of things, and I know Dr. Gilley is here, so maybe he can clarify some things for me. You know, we talk about the attendance on page five, we had like 92%, 94%. That's really high, right? Given what the state's been reporting for attendance. And I'm just wondering if there's any sense of why we're doing such a better job, or why we were with the remote learning, if there's any, because from what I've heard, the attendance hasn't been that high district-wide. We had one that was 99%. Do we have any thoughts about why we had so much better attendance?
Dr. Gilley?
Thank you. I think it speaks, it's a testament to what this committee has put forward as a priority to make sure that we are working with all of our families to get them connected in school. And so I think what this administration has done is taken that to heart and really did a concerted effort with working with our school leaders, our teachers, our par educators. Everyone has really picked up the wheel here and is working to support our students and families. I walked schools, and Mr. Underwood's gone now, but members of the custodial team, you see them assisting and working with families as well. So everyone is truly taking this to heart, everyone is experiencing this pandemic as such. And so anything and everything we can do to get our students and families connected to their learning, I think is what you see as a result of that attendance.
Great, thank you. Later on in the report, and I think this would be Ms. Desmond's question, I had asked about the Florida Virtual Log In because I was hearing feedback that it wasn't that useful, and I just wanted to know, you know, is this an investment we perhaps don't want to continue with? And on that report, you did a great job breaking it down for me, the numbers of student original logins and non-student, which I'm taking were typically teachers. And I'm just, and I have to say, I don't think, the numbers confirm that it wasn't a huge success, that people were using other ways of educating our students remotely. But why such a difference in the number of student logins versus the number of non, like the teacher logins? Was the program really more geared to student activities? Or I just, I don't know if you have an understanding, because I don't have an understanding of Florida Virtual, so I just thought that kind of jumped out at me.
So those numbers are the numbers of users. So one teacher would have like 20 users as students. So that's how it sort of breaks down.
All right, that makes sense.
But I think, you know, right from the beginning, we wanted to have this tool for teachers as a tool, but we also have always said to teachers, if you feel more comfortable utilizing something else that gets to the learning for our students. And I think right from the beginning, you know, I've always commended the curriculum team that works with me because they've always provided lots of resources to teachers that have been virtual sort of tools, you know, i-ready and all kinds of other things that we've always had. So we really didn't want to say to all teachers, they have to use this. We wanted this to be an option so that people had something to use, and particularly, I think, for some of our long-term subs who were coming in at the beginning of the year brand-new and maybe had not had the experience of using some other products that we have been using in the district for a while, this was a great option for them. So I think that's why you see the numbers. There's some locations that have been very, have been using Google Classroom, let's say, for a very long time and felt very comfortable with that. They didn't want to shift platforms. So you'll see in some schools, there's very little usage, or maybe none, because they were comfortable using another tool. And so that's really, I think, a breakdown.
And there were other, because Florida Virtual wasn't up to speed with the training, and we got the go-ahead from DESI late, I know there were other factors. The next one I want to talk about, I really think we might have to wait, no, I guess we could, the part about how many pairs were leading classes, I think we'd have to wait for Dr. Hall, right, to do an explanation on that?
Not necessarily. What would be the question?
Well, when we, actually, I've moved a page, there is another page, but when we talk about, I don't know where that page is now. If we, okay, classes led by paraprofessionals, page 10. So you have paraprofessionals that started, you know, in September and are still working as classroom teachers. So I'm just trying to understand that. I mean, I thought we were doing that as needed for substitutes.
No, it could be by design. Remember, we had, prior to our expansion and the reduction in social distancing, we had some classrooms that were split across two classroom spaces that could be dual-led by a teacher/para team, where you might have a paraprofessional that was the lead in one classroom to have the class together. In that case, you might have had 24 students that was assigned to a teacher across two classroom spaces, where then the two classroom spaces would have a teacher/para team that were working together. So that could be one example of that. So there are different examples where it might be by design as opposed to a substitute fill-in.
Well, I mean, that example makes sense, and that was what we discussed, because the teacher is still leading the class. The class is split into groups of 12 and 12 because that's all we could fit in person, because a para, and this is not to denigrate paraprofessionals, we have excellent paraprofessionals across the district, but a paraprofessional is not a certified teacher. So I guess, I'm trying to figure out, like, were there classes, like a whole classroom, that was taught by a paraprofessional for the, you know, because I think that would be, it probably doesn't even meet DESI requirements, right?
No, all of our classrooms meet DESI requirements, and some of our paraprofessionals, many of our paraprofessionals are highly qualified in choosing for various reasons to be paraprofessionals, but may have actually the credentials that are needed to be certified. So we have paraprofessionals that run the full gamut of why they're choosing to be in a paraprofessional. I don't think there should be any assumption by anyone that perhaps a paraprofessional is less qualified than a teacher. There is a different title, there's different requirements there, but we have some paraprofessionals that are highly experienced across the district, leading classrooms. If they're in there for a long duration, it is likely by design that they're there leading the classroom for a long duration. We also have paraprofessionals that are being utilized as substitutes on any given basis that might be there in duration for a longer period of time. If there's a further breakdown on individual cases, because I'll am sharing with you our examples, we can certainly provide that as a follow-up.
And I'll tell you, because what prompted this question as part of my motion was a parent who said her child was being taught by a paraprofessional. And again, there is a difference between a paraprofessional and teacher. They're paid very differently.
That's true.
There's certification requirements that are different. And so I guess this chart is not clear for me, because I don't understand, you know, which ones of these were, you know, a couple of weeks, somebody's out because they got COVID or whatever, or they need a substitute, as opposed to you're the teacher, you know, for this fifth-grade class or whatever. That was really where the concern was with that. And I, I'm good, I don't want to keep laboring these things, but these are where these concerns came from that prompted this motion. Thank you.
Yeah, please don't hesitate. Feel free to send the specific classroom, we can pull that specific. But just by way of clarification, I just want to understand the amount of work that staff does go through. Based on the request earlier tonight, Dr. Gilley has started to work on that during his spare time here this evening. He's only gone through seven schools, and he's already up to a report of 60 pages for you. That has to be then vetted, it has to be narrowed down. That's only six schools, seven schools. So he's got 21 more, which means he's going to be up to likely 400 pages to try to reduce it down to 20. So these things are more complex to respond to than sometimes perhaps the intent is. So you could have that, Ms. Dougherty, that we're the one table in there as it goes through these various iterations. But I want you to know that everybody's working really hard to respond, to get you as much information as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we maybe just need to remember that we were struggling to even have staff in our buildings for a period of time. So Paris did take on, you know, a lot more work than they typically would, and, you know, nothing about the remote learning scenario was what you'd consider normal. So, you know, a lot of our staff wore different hats and had to do different things, I think, so that might be reflected in the numbers, and we should remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Can I just ask a question, because I think that's a good point? Do you know about how many hours went into pulling the data for this report? Any idea?
Sure, Dr. Gilley might love to answer that. Dr. Gilley, he and I were working through one weekend, I think it was Easter weekend, through this particular report. Dr. Gilley?
Committee member Clark, I don't have a running log, but I can tell you one particular section. In there, one of the tables took our data team three days to pull that together. So again, the data lives in the system, but the manner of the process by which you have to go through to extract that data, then process it, then double-check it to make sure it's accurate. So one table in there actually took three days to actually assemble.
And we have probably at least about, at least 20 or so tables in this particular request. And I don't know, I don't know that I have a lot more deeper understanding. I mean, we've got a lot of numbers, we've got some good information. I think we have a lot of information that really confirms what we received even in the first report, to say our attendance was in good shape, our class sizes are an average of on-point to what we had agreed to. I just think it speaks to a few things that we, and I think we're coming up on the motion that I made about data analysis, a tool that can really pull data from different systems, create dashboards that are going to be very useful, that can be responsive to, you know, questions that we may be asking, and more importantly, the questions that are being asked in the schools and at the district level that can really help us, help a team make decisions that are going to impact our students and their learning. But I do think, you know, I've said it before, I come from a background of data. Data is really important, but it can also be overwhelming. And, you know, when we're looking at these attendance rates, for example, nothing is standing out as really significant in terms of, it's good, we did a great job, you spoke to it just a moment ago of how important, what a team effort it has been to ensure that our students are attending school. So I'll just say more when we get to that motion, but I think it's really important that we, as a committee, support the district and administrators in getting a tool that's really going to be useful for this reason and for others. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next report. Response regarding data online persons sped program, Ms. Dougherty, any questions on that? No, any questions? Eight three four, response motion, virtual listening session on remote learning, any questions on that?
I would steer the committee to the last page. The question, I guess, before you is, do you want to join a session that's already existing? The head of school did share some, a summary of what he's been hearing, or there's an opportunity, which I think was the intent of the original motion, to schedule a different session, which there are some suggested dates of that possibility, where you can do an evening listening session where it's specifically you're the audience. It's up to the committee, but you don't have to answer that right now, I just want to steer you there so you can provide that feedback so we can get that scheduled if need be.
I would like to answer that right now. I'd like us to make a decision, because I made this motion on February 2nd because I had students reaching out to me with frustration about remote learning at the high school. And now to find out that he's meeting weekly and we're given an opportunity of May 14 or May 19, it's a little late to try to have an impact on what the students want to tell us, but I want to hear what they want to say. I was very impressed with the high school presentation. I'm not faulting him, I'm just, again, expressing frustration that it's late to kind of be able to hear what they have to say and try to make some moves. You all remember, we had the student who called in and spoke, I think it was the same night, February 2nd, about she had a civics project to reach out to local community members, school committee, city council, and that was what prompted me to think, let's give them an opportunity to actually speak to us and listen. But I'm happy to do it the soonest we can do it. So I don't know if you guys don't want to do, I guess they have a Friday morning available, he doesn't say, yeah, Friday morning. I don't know what the 19th would be. Oh, an evening one could be on the 19th.
I don't know, Ms. Martin, any questions?
I mean, I think we could, you know, looking at the options, I don't know what other people's schedules are like, but if we were looking at a Friday, I mean, blending into what already exists seems to me easier than scheduling a specific additional meeting. So if he's doing, these are being hosted every Friday, is that right?
Well, that's what he said, but the dates that are offered isn't until Friday, May 14.
For the committee, again, this is the earliest possibility to respond to that motion in February. The committee had requested to abbreviate.
I don't remember any committee request for an abbreviated meeting on March 17th. Was there a vote on that?
I worked through the agenda with the mayor, there was a request to make sure that we could expedite that agenda.
We added a special meeting last week that was very light. Why didn't we have some of these reports then?
So there was a motion by the committee that, at this mayor's direction, that the response to motion would happen at the second meeting each month. I believe it was one meeting per month. I believe that motion originally started quarterly. The committee then requested that it be made monthly. It's been responded to, one meeting per month, the meeting in March, it was an abbreviated agenda for the March meeting, and now here we are at the second meeting in April. So any motions would have been responded to there.
Sure, Mr. Gillen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, you know, I'd be very happy with the option for any of us to join any of these meetings. I don't really see the importance of, over the next two weeks, learning what's wrong with remote learning when we're hopefully beyond remote learning for the most part, and we have a very short time left in this year. So, you know, I would certainly appreciate, I mean, for a lot of other reasons, I'd love to hop on to one of those meetings with Mr. Fiatto, but I certainly don't think that we need a full committee meeting necessarily, but, you know, it's a good option and something that I'm certainly going to consider. So, thank you.
Ms. Clark?
I agree. I think I would like to join the May 14th meeting. It sounds, it seems like that's one that's available, it's a standing meeting, and, you know, perhaps because it's close to the end of the year, we can get a bit of a recap from students that are going to be there. So the other thing I'm interested in, I meant to mention it when Mr. Fiatto was here, but is there any way that we can get on the Monday memo that he, the email that he said he sends out? I'm curious if that's something that's, is it to the high school student body, or is it?
Any community, I believe he's referring to a staff memo.
Oh, it's a staff memo, okay, yeah, now I understand.
The construction updates essentially come from our internal meetings. So that's stuff that moves through our facilities department, that then we have a meeting internally each month with the school, with our facilities department, and myself, to connect all of our notes. That then enables him to provide an update out to the school community. We can give something like that if that's helpful.
No, got it. I just was really, I thought if it was something that was going out to the student body, that it would be something that would be interesting to.
Anything that goes to the full community, we can always add committee members to that, to any of those lists.
But I'm happy to attend on the May 14th listening session. Thank you.
Let's just, I would like to be included in that, too. Anybody who wants to participate in the listening session on the 14th?
Sure, Ms. Martin?
So can I ask what time that's at?
Ms. Desmond, do you know the time?
Eight fifteen.
Ms. Desmond will also be your point person, she'll help to coordinate that effort for you.
So we do have a couple of weeks now prior, you know, to, prior to our participation on this, and the group will be having other discussions, you know, leading into this. So do we have an opportunity then on the 14th? So do we have an opportunity then on the 14th to have this be, you know, for the students to have an opportunity to prepare so that, you know, kind of this, this session, where they had to listen, I want to make sure that they understand what the opportunity is for them.
I believe that was the intent of scheduling it for the 14th so that we could gather some information and be able to get that back to head of schools Fiatto. And then he would be able to work along with Tom Thornton, because Tom Thornton does a lot of this work with the children, with the students to, you know, make sure the students are aware of who's attending and sort of be able to gather their questions.
Okay, I think, I think that's great. So if we can just get that, you know, the invitation and the link, whatever, I think that would be helpful. And I think for Mr. Thornton and, and Mr. Fiatto for that matter, if there is some kind of preliminary work that they would like us to do in preparation for that, so that it can be time well spent, both for ourselves and more importantly, for the students, I think we'd certainly be willing to, to do whatever we can to make that a productive session. Thank you.
So we will follow up with an email to the committee?
Okay. So just to be clear on this response, I didn't understand what you were saying, Mr. Superintendent, about reporting back on motions.
So if you recall, I believe when you first came on as, as mayor, at that time there was a discussion about having motion responses consolidated. I believe the discussion was between, it was, they were coming every meeting. The conversation was about quarterly. I believe ultimately the committee determined once a month that those responses would come.
So let me just jump in. What I, just to clarify, when we, in the beginning of the packet, we have a, we have a report on status of outstanding motions, that's what I meant should be like quarterly, just so we know where all the motions are. You can answer the motions as fast as you can. I was just saying on this quarterly report, it just gives us the status of where they are. Have they been answered, are they in progress or, so that's what I meant by that. So when we do motions tonight, they can be answered at any time and as quickly as possible. So just so there's no confusion, that's.
Okay, that was the, yeah, that was the standing process that we had when you entered. We can certainly go back to that.
Okay. All right. I'm just confused on that. Okay. So this meeting you're setting up for the 14th is to discuss what worked and what didn't work for?
I think I just want to listen to the high school kids.
Okay.
It's not going to be, I mean, I was hearing the frustration that they had back in December.
It seems to be working better now.
But this is just, tell us what you want us to know.
Okay.
That's how I'm looking at it at this point.
All right. I was in a Spanish class last week and it went well, so. I was working on someone's house, I listened in, Spanish teacher, yeah, muy bueno, everything was excellent. Thanks, so, okay. Next report, citywide council update. Is that, any questions on that report? Okay. So now to Ms. Clark's response for the visual, visual visualization tool and dashboard. Ms. Clark?
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Thank you for collecting the information and identifying the timeline of how things were kind of put on pause. When you say coming months, is this something that we're thinking this fiscal year, next fiscal year? Just to get a sense.
Yeah, so I reached out to a couple of other districts. There's a, because the procurement process is really, what procurement process we will need to follow, will determine the timeframe. We would expect, again, that this will come forward with a placeholder within the budget pending bidding. We'll have to get approval of the budget line from the committee in May. And then depending on what the procurement process is that we have to follow, if we can work off of a partnership agreement that another district already has for a similar type vehicle, that's one thing. If we're going out to a pure bid that we expect to exceed a certain dollar amount, it could take longer. But that's, that's essentially the reference there.
Great. And I think it is important to note the way that it was noted, that you now have even further clarification on what dashboards you're most interested in, what data you really want to merge together. And so that will just be even more helpful as you're going and looking at these vendors and the tools that are out there. So, thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good motion and it can probably solve a lot of issues for us, the administration, and, I mean, maybe, you know, probably the whole community by making, and maybe Dr. Gillery's hours. He's, he doesn't get paid by the hour, does he?
He's made multiple requests to shift.
But I, no, yeah, I think improving our, our data tools is, is huge. Ms. Clark, do you have suggestions? Because this is your ballpark, isn't it? I mean, do you, do you have input or maybe you've already provided?
I think, you know, I'm familiar with Tableau, you know, it was mentioned as something that was looked at before, but I, I do think going with other districts and seeing what they have, no reason to recreate the wheel and certainly K through 12 is not my wheelhouse. So I think.
Sure.
And certainly with the systems that you're looking to connect to, I, I fully trust that, that folks are doing their job and, and able to kind of find the best tool for our district.
Because, you know, I, I looked through some of the options that are in the report and I, I was just wondering if you had different ideas, maybe not being in the K to 12, if you knew of any others. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, and I just have two questions. You don't mention costs anywhere here, or if you did, I didn't see it. Do we have an idea what the investment is going to be for this?
It's going to be a difference.
Tool that you're thinking about?
It'll be a difference as to whether we go with a software as a service, which is an ongoing cost, or we look to purchase or build something. So it's going to be a buy, buy or build scenario that we're currently going through that analysis. We're part of a consortium that I just met with last week. The consortium was going in one direction that I actually thought might be a direction that we could benefit from. That direction unfortunately with the consortium didn't, was, was a failed pilot. It was piloted and not found to continue. I did have a subsequent conversation with Boston Public Schools that went in one direction, learned from that pilot, went in another direction. They're having success with their current, current vendor. I'm scheduled to follow on with them to understand better the differences between those two experiences. My hope is that we can alleviate the pilot process by learning from those successes of those different institutions and perhaps go with one that's been found to be successful. If we can get that, if we can get more specific, it's usually on a per student amount that we can usually put, we'll put as a placeholder within the budget line until we go out to our more formal bid process.
And so when we did the RFP process in 2020, what were the numbers at that time? Like kind of ballpark, what were we thinking of in terms of an investment at that time? That was last year.
Do you recall the, the numbers? I can quote you what the ballpark would be, but Dr. Gillery, do you remember the number?
I think it was around 50,000 at that time.
Three dollars, three dollars per kid is an expectation that we'd have for a district our size.
That, yeah, that doesn't sound too bad. Are we looking at getting away from Aspen?
It's our student information system, so that's different than the data visualization tool.
So you want something that's going to work?
Yeah. So you've got a, so the, the student inform, we have to input into a database, a data warehouse that we can then pull out. But you also need the overlay, which is what we've been building. So you take that analysis of data, internally we've been building these. These would be your dashboards of sorts. So Aspen has a number of different vehicles within. We just actually expanded that within the registration system, if you recall. So registration, student scheduling, we can pull out a number of reports, any kind of individual report. What you, what it doesn't have is the predictive analytics. It doesn't have the visualization based on early warning indicators. It, it doesn't have the type of user-friendly visualization tools that you might be accustomed to in your place of business, where you click on something, you see it very quickly. How does it compare against different standards, different norms, different goals? It's a, it's a database, it's a system. That's our student information system that we put into. Whatever we contract with would have to be able to communicate with Aspen, which fortunately Aspen's one of the broader and more widely used systems, so we don't anticipate that being a challenge.
Mr. Dakota, you all set? Mr. Dakota?
Just a quick comment about Aspen. From what I understand about Aspen is that we're, we're only tapping about 10% of what it can do, what it potentially can do for us. So it's, it's a beast. It really is. And if we can harness that beast, it would be a good thing.
It does, it has a lot of capabilities. Unfortunately, this is not one of them, but we are going to start using the registration aspect of it that you just, we just signed on to. Mr. Mayor, if I could, Ms. Desmond has a couple of updates on other questions that were answered previously. Are you okay with her providing those updates?
Sure. It's getting late, so speed it up.
This is very quick. I apologize. I had said eight fifteen for the student meeting. It's actually going to be 7:55. I just confirmed via text with head of school Fiatto. I did not want to give the wrong information, so. And then the other thing was earlier, we talked about when the children, students went home for lunch, when they regain, when they rejoin the remote class, it's actually 12:55. I just went in and checked the schedule. So I just wanted to, I didn't want to be on TV saying the wrong thing.
What was the time that they're leaving though?
12:20.
Did that give them, they all have to walk though? Does that give them enough time? We don't, we, I mean, you're taking either the city bus or you're walking, right?
I think, you know, we, we'll see how, how it goes. If we see that we need to make some adjustments, maybe using some sort of asynchronous time to get kids online successfully, we'll make those adjustments.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions on the motions? Need a motion to approve? A motion to accept reports of progress, eight, one through eight, three, six, as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. All those in favor? Home education, any questions on that? Mr. Dillon? Sure, motion approved by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Six shades approved.
New business, approval to accept and expend allocated 21 awards. Anything on that, Mr. Superintendent?
No, each of the, each of the items are procedural. All the recommendations are approval as written.
Any questions on that?
To approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Six shades approved.
Nine, two, vote to accept the donation of $533 from Greater Lowell Community Foundation. Any questions on that? Motion approved by Ms. Dakota, seconded by.
It's actually from Mr. Joseph Mendonza.
From what?
Through the Greater Lowell Foundation. It's from Joe Mendonza. It's a donation from former school committee man, former city counselor.
Okay.
I just wanted to put his name out there, give him credit for that.
Sure, yep. So motion by, who did I say? Ms. Martin?
I need a second.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Six shades approved.
Professional personnel, members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 15 six days to Dorothy Miller Bartlett School Teacher. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Six shades approved.
Anything else, Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you don't control the situation, but if you could pass it along, maybe to the council and anybody else in the city that would love another colleague.
Oh, yep.
Can we, you know, get that process moving? I, I understand.
Hopefully we'll get someone this week.
I'd just like to emphasize that we'd, we'd like to get somebody else in there, you know.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. And before we go, I believe you probably know about this, is Thursday night the coat drive?
Ah, yes, thank you for reminding me. Coats for Man Above, started by Larry Finn, former firefighter, all-around Lowell champion, always doing awesome stuff. He provides hundreds, hundreds of coats every year to the homeless population and also to Lowell Public Schools students directly. And he's, this has, the program's grown so much over the years that he, he raises money and coats and he started to have big events. And so this Thursday is one of the big events. I believe it was pushed off because they didn't really get a chance to do a, a big one, maybe in the fall. But it, this is just another chance to raise money and, and collect coats for the kids that need it. So cobblestone?
Cobblestone and Lenzies.
Cobblestones and Lenzies in Drake it, yes. So.
Probably.
Competition to see who can raise the most and collect the most coats. So awesome event and I'm sure there'll be a lot of good people, a lot of good people there. So check, check it out and support that program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Nice job.